Okay, let's go ahead and begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to
Recording in progress.
stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you have a second please?
Second.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and start off with the approval of the regular meeting minutes. I'm sorry, first is roll call, Dan Roddinghouse.
Here.
John Estrich.
Yep.
Bridget Hayes here. Curtis Ward is not here. Rick Whitaker.
Here.
We do have a call. Okay, start off with the minutes of the regular meeting from May 6th, 2024.
Make a motion that we approve.
John motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is the certification of the executive session that was held on Thursday, May 9th. The purpose of the executive session was to, was with respect to Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-6.1B5, to receive information about and interview prospective employees. No subject matter was discussed in the executive session other than the subject matter specified in the public notice. Is there a motion to approve the certification?
Make a motion.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. So, we had this executive session to interview candidates for the town manager position, and we interviewed two candidates. So if anyone has a motion to hire either the first candidate or the second candidate, without divulging the name, based off of whether they, you know, agree or not, or tell their previous employer, whatever. And then also, if you, if you do have a motion for that, if you can also motion for the salary.
Oh, I haven't even thought about that, really. I thought it was-
You gotta put it in the note, we gotta put it in the-
I thought it was something we would negotiate.
Well, we have to put something, we have to agree to offer something. If you want to say something like candidate whatever, well, for a salary of 2,000, and then give someone the authority to negotiate it in case that didn't happen, or I think-
Could you just say a nominal salary?
What do you mean? Just a salary?
Yeah, a nominal salary.
I talked to Kristen at New Focus HR about it, she said generally you could offer, but then if you have to counter offer, you'd have to tell them you're going to have to counsel.
Thank you, that's right.
Because you guys, the owners of Haggan Corp., he said that.
To negotiate, okay, sorry, my bad.
So go over that again, when the motion, we do what?
If you make a motion for a candidate, uh, one or two, and then the salary is biweekly, it's 2,000, I think what we had, and the whole salary was up to 4,500 biweekly. So you would pick whatever you think is appropriate or make a motion, and then they would be offered that.
And then if they say no, then we would just tell them, we'll have to go back to the council and decide again, all right, however that goes, okay, sorry.
Well, I make a motion, we hire candidate number one at the 2,000 a week, biweekly, or whatever.
John made a motion to hire candidate number one, which is- Pardon?
When did you say you wanted me to?
Uh, when we interviewed, we interviewed one person and then the second person.
Yeah.
Are you, okay. So John made a motion to hire candidate number one for 2,000, is there a second? Dan seconded, um, or is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, three to one. Okay, thank you. Next is approval of claims and payroll. So the claims this week is 194,000, that's not right. Yeah, that's right. That seems low.
That's good, Dan.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'm gonna listen some dates now, I'm getting scared I have to stay here.
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the claims, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Uh, next is payroll. Total for payroll is 52,759.25. Payroll's going up because employees, we have more employees. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Next is the KSC 22-year-old drive request for July 12th and 13th with a rain date, rain date of July 19th and 20th. Donation collected will help children and adults in the community with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And now, this is on Main Street and Mill and Sixth, is that right? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the KSC dates?
Motion.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second? Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I'll pass them along.
Okay, next is the DORA ordinance. So, in terms of the DORA ordinance, uh, we did approach the Lutheran and Methodist Church. Um, I went with Main Street to discuss their concerns, and, um, at this point, they are not ready to provide that support to us. And so, we have some choices, and that is to just redraw the map.
Mm-hmm.
To, to, basically, that would be taking out the pars, and only including, um, uh, the VFW, and then third place, and then all the way down Main Street. So the, the rule is, as long as the DORA boundary, which at that point, it would be Main Street and, is that Ninth? Where the Methodist Church, uh, Eighth? Eighth, sorry. So the, the DORA boundary would be Main Street and Eighth, which is 200 feet from the building of the Methodist Church, which is in compliance, so we would not have to ask, we would not need a letter of support from them.
Which, which church has no letters of support?
Uh, both, both the Lutheran and the Methodist.
Oh, okay.
They were both concerned about, um, many, many things.
Okay.
Um, I offered if we could, uh, mess with the, um, the times that it was open, or the days it was open to maybe limit it, or limit the times it was open, and, um, they said they needed to discuss it more, and so it sounds like they're not gonna.
Okay.
So, I just figured if, if we all agree to, um, reducing the map to take out the pars, so that we don't need the letters of support, then we can have Andy do that for our next meeting, and then hopefully approve it, if that's an agreement with everybody here?
That's fine.
Dan?
Yes.
Rick, okay, okay, so we'll do that, thank you. So that's what's happening with DORA. Next is the bid for golf course hole number 11, Ben Harrison. We received the bid from Ben Harrison, the only bid, for $71,160.96. And we took that under advisement at the last meeting. So, Tim, does, is it all in order for us?
Everything must be in order, my, so I think everything's okay with that bid.
Okay, thank you.
There, he did remind me that addition to, that hole 11 repaired, that there probably need to be, that car path will have to be from, from the maintenance building back hole 11, uh, which is my agreement, he said we'll probably have to have new gravel stuff built on it, because by the time you run concrete trucks over it, and is it weathered, that it's probably not gonna be much of a path. I just wanted to make sure that the board knew about this. I don't know what cost that spent on that height. I'm not sure exactly what that costs. But that must be included in the bid, he just reminded me that it's probably going to require more gravel, possibly, and what type of weather it, there is when he goes in there that it could be, to be redone. So, I think it's just a matter of having if you love gravel all day and spread over the car path, or, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I make a motion to accept the quote.
Uh, John made a motion to accept the Ben Harrison quote for hole 11, Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? Do I, there's no place for me to sign Gina's?
We'll have to get a contract prepared.
Okay, can I just sign that in the office, or do we need to bring that?
I think they're approving this, and, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. And Tim, the timeframe on that is gonna be very dependent on the weather, you and, you and he are gonna figure out when the best time for that, and with Ron, of course.
Yes.
To figure out the best time that's gonna happen.
Yes.
And it could be later in the summer?
It's, it's possible, just depends on how the weather operates, because if he was back there, things would've been, I think it would've been worse than these.
So as long as it's done this year?
Oh, yes, it may change that.
We just, we're not sure of timeframe yet.
Well, yeah, yeah, if, if I, yeah, I should remember.
Sorry.
June 29th, the week of the 29th, am I, am I to understand that this could be done in, over like a week's time if the weather holds up?
I do, I don't really know the timeline, I didn't talk to Ben, the timeline really, mainly about the tires, so the project, I didn't ask him how he would take it.
I just know what my June schedule looks like, and, um, I have a very relatively small outing on that upcoming Saturday, which would give me a week, because I could close that hole, and then another week before the next big outing.
Gotcha.
So-
Well, I think if you guys just get together and figure that out, maybe Ben can work that in, depending on what his jobs are this summer, I don't, I don't know what that is either.
Okay.
If you see a point in the proposal, actually, you can edit three months from the date of your award, so.
Oh. Okay.
So it could be an opportunity to really just only have one-
Yeah.
-small outing, which, because he's having a hard time getting that outing together.
Gotcha.
So, and then that gives me two weeks.
That sounds perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
One's another picture.
Exactly. Next is our additional appropriation for the, I mean, uh, public hearing for the additional appropriation, so do we, um-
I can approve all the others once, and-
Okay, just when we open the public hearing?
Yeah, after, um, then I think I have any questions or comments. So, I did run those for additional appropriation, the first one, um, this was supplies, uh, we did not appropriate the town car signs that were approved, so I went ahead and put them in there, and inadvertently, we do buy some town supplies for the park, cleaning equipment for the, uh, the shelters and that sort of thing, so I did not have one of them for that, so I included that for 3500. Then the 2,000 was for the additional that we didn't appropriate for the club house deck, that was completed, so I gave them a budget of 5,000, and we ended up spending seven, um, the golf course repairs, when we originally discussed this, we talked about 150,000, which I thought was for both projects, but we already completed the emergency repairs for 14, we paid those for a minute, um, but I went ahead and baptized that, 150,000. And then the 17,500, I needed to reimburse, uh, MVH from last year, that I took the run from like the initial at the end of the year. So that total for general was 173,000. And then, um, I thought the salt dam or salt den would be completed in 2023, but I didn't cover that money to be spent in 2024, um, so I need to do an additional spend, um, money towards the salt dam, so that's 7,000, our cost of 7,000. And then recording only for grant purposes, there was a change of reserves during Main Street project, um, which increased some of the, um, cost to property owners themselves, and that total so far is 1,982.84. PLG, I just want to look at that, that's just to let them know, since they do not dictate what it means to spend that money from that grant number, so.
So, are, are there any questions from the public? Seeing no questions from the public, I close the public meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Um, and can move on to Resolution 2024-5, uh, which is the, uh, 173,000 from the general, and 7,000 from MVH, and then the 1,982.84 from the Preserving Main Street grant. Is there a motion to approve these additionals?
Motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve, is there a second?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
How did these, uh, these amounts get back into the appropriate, like 150,000 for the golf course?
So these are based on our cash reserves, PLG have to look at what we appropriated for 2024, what we have to spend, and what we're to receive. If they think you have inappropriate cash reserves, you go ahead and best bill through it, if not, they would reject it.
But one of the good questions I get asked is, are we making money for golf courses? It shows us making 278 dollars, but where does that 150,000 show?
The general fund, the total of balance in the general fund.
So instead of making 270, we lost 149,000.
If, if all that is expended, it doesn't show up on that court meeting course.
Okay.
Okay, John made a motion to approve Resolution 2024-5, is there a second? Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried. We do have to sign this, guys.
You're good.
Um, next is, uh, the two-hour parking downtown.
I wanted to-
I'm gonna turn you around, thanks.
I wanted to find out how the council was on doing two-hour parking downtown, as a temporary trial, uh, putting bags over the, the parking meters from Third Street to, what is it, Eighth Street? And just having two-hour parking there, a trial at the end of the summer, look at it again, see if we want to do permanent, if we don't want to do it. I wanted to get your feelings before I went to Andy, have him write up an ordinance, which costs 10% of money, so I didn't want him to write up an ordinance, and everybody say, "Well, that's a stupid idea." So I'm just trying to get a feeling of how you feel. I'm good with it.
I thought we were gonna wait on that until the end of the summer, when we decided, that's, that's what Curtis says, is, let's take the, the parking meters off of the side streets, and then see how that goes this summer, and then decide after that.
What he told me was that we would do it for the summer-
Yeah.
-and then decide in September or October if we want to do permanent, but he was being discarded over the summer, that's when we want to have a trial, when there's tourism and all that.
Oh, I was thinking, I, I personally would just like to hear from the police department on how the two-hour parking, I mean, how, how are the-
Terry, that's told me it's been working fine.
He, uh, I talked to, uh, George Gilman, and, uh, he had a problem with a couple of cars parking in his spot, he called the police station, said he come down and handled it, and he's happy he's gonna be right now, so.
Is there any way that Terry can maybe come at our next meeting and just, I mean, just talk to us about it?
Sure, he can.
Okay, I mean, that, I would like to hear from him.
Yeah, he's, he's all for it, too.
I mean, has he been giving tickets out, or people are just, are, are people just complying?
Yes. We've got a doubt there that if somebody is parking like George in front of a business that shouldn't be, they call the police, they come in. We haven't had any problems.
I've seen a lot of cars parked in the police department municipal lot, and the Eighth Street lot, all day.
Well-
A lot.
Maybe it's not causing a problem for anyone. If it's causing a problem for someone, then they would call and say, "We have a problem."
So, I'm with, and this is, this is the reason why I wanted to hear from them, because either we have two-hour parking and we enforce it, or we don't have two-hour parking, do you know what I mean? Because it's like, well, you enforce it for some people, but not for others, you let people park in the municipal lot all day without giving them a ticket, but then as soon as a business owner calls you, you give them a ticket, that's not fair.
Well-
So that's why I was just wondering-
Let's talk to Terry about it.
Yeah, I was just wondering, maybe we could take the two-hour parking out of the municipal lots, except for the one by Dollar Store, maybe take it out of the police department, maybe take it out of the Eighth Street-
Yeah.
-and just let people park there, rather than have a sign up that we're not gonna enforce, is my thing. Because I think if you have a sign up, I think we should enforce it, I don't, and I don't think it should be, um, people complain and then we enforce, I think that we should proactively enforce. That's, otherwise, why have it up there? Or have a little sign that says, you know, "Complain to someone," or something.
Well, I mean, if it's working.
Well, just because someone isn't complaining doesn't mean that it's working, it just means someone isn't complaining, in, in my view, but that's just, you asked for my opinion, so.
I'm for it.
So I will get with Andy to head right at the moment.
And you said it was no problem, everybody else said no problem, okay, gotcha, thank you. Um, next is the triad engineering agreement for the water line replacement. This is for, uh, the water main replacement on US 52, right away from State Route 1, west to Butler Street, in advance of the NDOT US 52 Improvement Project. So this, um, this is to replace, uh, a, a new six-inch main, new valves, hydrants, and water service reconnections for approximately 15 services that we anticipate have lead lines.
Yes, that's correct.
And this is also in anticipation of NDOT repaving this entire area in 2025?
Yes, uh, not only are they gonna repave there, but new storm sewers in that area also, so there's gonna be a lot of construction in the spring of, actually, 2026.
Oh, I thought it was 2025.
I'll have to check on that.
The last paper I have says 2025, but they could've, you know, pushed it.
They could be, I'll have to check, but we're ahead of the game right now, so, um, we'll have to get this done before they come in.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Need us to approve it?
Yes, this is for, um, this is for, uh, for, 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 seventy thousand five hundred dollars is the total cost of the project, or the engineering design.
I make a motion to approve that.
John made a motion to approve, uh, for triad, is there a second? Rick seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, three to one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Just, if, if I could, we made a dent in January, I'm, I'm gonna not approve stuff that won't affect the town unless I feel that's my case, I mean, so that's why, we, when I don't approve something or disagree, it's because I, you know, I don't wanna spend money on a huge company.
Okay, thank you.
So please take that out.
Thanks, Dan. Next is building permit number 1010 for Jeff Cooker, this is at 1240 Main Street for a 14-by-8 walk-in closet, is this in, in interior?
Actually, it's adding to the footprint of the house.
It's what?
It's adding to the footprint of the house, but there's no conflict with the everything.
Okay. It's just an addition?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. And the setbacks and all that, or?
Yes, they're, okay.
Okay.
I make a motion for building permit, 1010.
Dan made a motion to approve building permit number 1010, is there a second?
Second.
John seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? Uh, next is the water plant analyzer quote.
Um, the water plant is analyzers that monitor the water continuously, and the current analyzers have been in there for about 20 years, and they have just finally, just broken down, and they're not working correctly, so decided to replace them with newer models. I think there were two quotes submitted. One is for two controllers, and the other is for one controller, and they questioned the manufacturer of this, and he said if analyzers are too far apart, you need two controllers, well, our analyzers are both on the same wall together, so we only need one controller, so, um, I'm asking for, um, on quote number two, it's the lesser amount of 2,442 dollars, which, 20 years ago, I believe that these cost more than that.
Wow.
Yes.
Something went down.
Yes, I know.
It's a miracle.
I'd make a motion to approve that, 10,442 dollars.
John made a motion to approve the water plant analyzer, is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion carried? Next is the Franklin County zoning code amendment ordinance, 2024-7. So this is a very thick, um, ordinance, uh, so this is from Caitlin Sterwerf, the, um, area planning director. Um, the attached section, uh, from the, uh, Franklin County Code 80.03.15 floodplain district is derived from a model ordinance from the Indiana DNR Division of Water. This ordinance was necessary for the county to pass in order to keep their good standing with the National Floodplain Insurance Program. The ordinance was given a favorable recommendation from the Franklin County Area Planning Commission, then approved by the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. The changes made from this ordinance compared to the previous section, 80.03.15, are very minimal, making the change just a formality.
Do we have to waive, again, do we have to vote on this twice, or once?
It's, it is an ordinance, so yes, we have to waive the rules.
So I make a motion that we waive the rules.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed?
I make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
John made a motion to approve ordinance- John made a motion to approve ordinance 2024-7, an ordinance to amend the Franklin County Citizen Zoning Code of Franklin County, Indiana, for flood, for the flood, floodplain district. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is building permit, um, number 1011 for the Brookfield Tire Mart. So the Brookfield Tire Mart located at 653 Main Street would like to replace their roof. And they want to add a pitch to their roof because the roof is currently flat. So this is gonna be a metal roof. And because they are changing the pitch, that has to go to the Historical Preservation Commission, which doesn't meet until tomorrow. Uh, but currently, the staff from Indiana Landmarks did look at their application for their certificate of appropriateness and has recommended to approve it, but it's ultimately up to the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Everything okay?
Yes, it's sort of just a formality that we're looking at. We need to provision attention upon the actual findings of the COA. Is that...
Her recommendation said?
Yes.
Her recommendation is that the building is small future due to the age and...
Yeah.
So she, the staff is recommending, and the Landmarks is recommending it, but it's ultimately up to HPC to approve that COA. So if they don't approve it, then they don't make the building permit.
I make a motion that we approve this contingent on the COA funding.
John made a motion to approve 653 Main Street Brookfield Tire Mart. Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And I'll just write that on the permit. Next is salary ordinance amendment 2024-8.
So I had to include the salaries for the part-time workers at the pool. Um, I wanted to do something a little bit different this year. The past two years, the wages were increased anyways because wages in the area were increasing for a lot of persons. So this year, I thought, I asked another municipality how they do their wages and they base it on experience. So you have a base for a new hire and then they increase it incrementally for one-year experience, two-years experience, three-years. So I would like to kind of follow that, um, that, what do you wanna say? Um, model per se and just increase it 25 cents per hour for the shared experience. This is what I would recommend. But I need to know that that base mark will be in a few years to that. Um, also, there were golf course supporting employees that we had not replenished that month before either. So I would like to replenish that month for them as well. So I do have, I don't know if I have any good signatures, you know? I have, I wish.
Yeah. Oh, am I the only one? Sorry. There you go.
Well, I don't know if they saw it in there. That's what she, what it looks like. Do you have yours, Dan?
And then, I don't know, this is a lost copy, but there was one section I didn't work through about minimum hours required in it, which I think Kristin from New Focus told me to remove. Um, let me see if I can work through it.
Yeah, it's on page...
Oh, it's the very next page. Sorry.
So where?
Because she said in the handbook, those positions, their hours are specified in the handbook.
Okay.
So we need to put that in the salary ordinance.
So how does the council feel about the, I guess, the baselines for the car attendants and golf course primaries, lifeguards and pool attendants?
You want a motion?
Oh, I thought we were gonna, if anybody wanted to talk about it, but sure, I'll take a motion.
I'll take a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Um, John made a motion to approve...
Sorry, can I ask a question? Should we go ahead and write this into permitting the same way that proposed offer for the town on the first page? Is that okay?
Sure.
It was 2,000. Are you doing? That way I don't have to write back again.
Yeah.
That's what.
We love this. Uh, John made a motion to, well, this is an ordinance, so we have to suspend the rules again.
I make a motion that we suspend the rules.
John made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Rick seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. John, do you want to make another motion?
I make a motion that we approve baselines and models.
Ordinance 2024-8 as presented by, um, for treasure.
Thanks for clearing that up.
And that's the only other change, is that 75 hours?
Correct. And, uh, and the rest of the document. And then the first page will be added to the target if you guys...
So if we change, if we go ahead and sign this last page, you can print it out without all the...
Correct.
Thank you. John made a motion to approve 2024-8. Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Getting some work done today. 2024 dash, did that say dash eight?
Yep.
Oh, that's the one. Okay. This one is, this is nine. Okay. Next is the employee handbook update, which is ordinance 2024-9. Oh, okay. So she just has the handbook with ordinance 2024-9 and then the last page is just our signatures. Okay.
So I think I sent the original copy out with all of Kristen's highlights on it from New Focus. Um, the one change is to page two. I think John spoke about that, where the town manager reports the president of the council and the rest of the document. Did you find other places to your other pages that you were concerned with?
I would just like to table this, to have more time to look at it. I'd like to have her, if the town manager agrees to come on, I'd like her to look at it also.
Okay. The newest change that Kristin did send today, she kept that sentence pretty much the same under all civilian employees that raise now. The town manager reports the president of the town council in coordination with all members of the town council. Um, and that was her recommendation. Um, I sent that email. Did you see what we went to?
I'm having problems with my town email and I'll get over to see, to help an old man that doesn't know anything about technology.
Okay, so John wants to tables. How does everyone else feel? To the table or to the pass? To table, okay. Dan? Okay. All right, let's table. Okay, next is building permit 1012 for Matthew and Aaron Baker. This is at 910 Franklin Avenue for a 12-by-12 mudroom addition on the southeast corner of the existing structure.
There's no conflict with this, um, just part setbacks or anything. Basically, uh, I know there's a small addition on my capacity, which is remodelled, so, um, I think it's okay. I mean, there's no conflict with it.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve.
John made a motion to approve application number 1012 for Matthew and Aaron Baker at 910 Franklin Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is employee resignation and request to advertise. So we got a notice that Austin Guy from our water department has officially resigned. He says he wants to thank everyone for giving him the opportunity to work here and to learn and grow my skills in this field, and I'm grateful for that. You'll need my assistance with the transition during the upcoming weeks. Please let me know. I would be glad to help and my phone is always on if there's ever any questions about anything. Sincerely, Austin Guy.
I make a motion we approve the resignation.
John moved to approve the resignation of Austin Guy. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. And do you also have a motion to advertise?
To advertise the opening.
John made a motion to go ahead and advertise the opening in the water department. Is there a second? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Um, Dan seconded. Uh, does, do we want to put this on Indeed, Tim, or how do you do this?
Actually, we've already gotten a few applications. So at this time, we have regards this Indeed.
So we've given you the ability to advertise if you need to. If you want to go ahead and look through your previous applications from the other position, by all means. And then if you come to the end of your road, then you've already gotten the authority to advertise.
Okay.
And if you want me to put it on Indeed, just let me know or...
Okay, thank you.
Well, okay. Next, oh, that's it. Oh, that's it. Anything from anybody else?
Me. I want to thank all the first responders and dispatchers, that includes dispatchers, on their efforts after the tornado hit and windstorm. It was exemplary. I had a scanner and I couldn't believe all the places they were going and all the problems they were running into. It's, we were blessed that nobody was seriously injured. Uh, and EMA Director Amy Lindsay put in a communications plan for the eclipse. And we didn't need it for the eclipse, but we needed it that Tuesday night. And from what I've heard from the first responders, it worked very well. So it's a job well done by everyone.
Thanks, John. Anything else? Um, I just have one thing that, I sent a flyer out to you guys about the sidewalk improvement program. Um, I wanted to start to kind of advertise that we have this program out there so that more people will hopefully start using that funding or that grant from the town to improve their own sidewalks. Um, did anybody, would that, I mean, I just wanted to get the council's consent to go ahead and do that? Dan?
Rick.
Rick, did you get a chance to look at that?
Uh, just not really, I couldn't get over it.
Okay. Maybe I can pull it up before you leave now and just get your two cents. Um, thanks. And the last thing I had that I wanted to, um, to see if the council would be willing to establish a conference room in the Zimmer Building. Um, it's my understanding that it was decided that the lunchroom would be the conference room and I would just like to see if everybody would be willing to wallow that smaller area in the public media room as a conference room. Um, because the conference room that's here in the town is used a lot. Um, and establishing like a TV so that we could do Zoom would be extremely beneficial, that would be very helpful to the town, I think, in terms of professionalism and just being able to use that technology in the future. Since we're doing construction, I just wanted to see how the council felt about that.
I think we need a room in the meeting room. It's gonna be much smaller than this. It'd probably be smaller than Chili. Like, we need all the room we can. I think there'll be enough room in the room that we've chosen that it can have audiovisual equipment and I think everybody would be fine in there.
So John, you can see that there's only three people here. And not to say that our meetings are gonna be full of people, but that meeting room is gonna be able to hold at least 30 to 40 people, just the smaller area. And, and so I appreciate you wanting to have room for the public, because I do too and I agree with you on that. Um, but the other, the kitchen area is not, both walls, one wall has cabinets, the other wall is a, like a, those doors where you hold storage and we won't be able to hang a TV on there. And then one wall is windows. So it just, it's just not set up to be a conference room. It's...
You have your opinion and I have my opinion, like with the parking.
I was just trying to give you some more reasons why. That's all I was trying to do, John.
I have my opinion.
How does the council feel, the rest of the council feel?
I wasn't prepared until the last meeting, so I'm not sure. Whether or not, I didn't move in right then. So that was all discussed since I was on the council. I'm not prepared to let you speak.
Okay. Do you think you can take a look at it before our next meeting so we can, we can vote? Rick, how do you feel about the conference room?
I think we need to keep the way we were working, which we need a conference room.
Keep the conference room in the kitchen, in the same room? I mean, have conferences in there?
Yes.
And? That's all I had. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Are there any other issues from the public?
Put that on the next agenda?
Huh?
Are you gonna bring it back? You said look at it. Put it on the next agenda?
Yes, if you don't mind. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, are we, and maybe this is my ignorance, but you need to apologize for this. When did we have to start getting people through the rose and colors of the historical district? I thought that was gone.
No, the whole town. They kept it just on Main Street. Um, was it Third to?
Third to Eighth?
Third and Eighth.
Or, oh, maybe Ten?
That was Ten.
Sorry.
But I have a map. I can show it to you.
That's okay. I just, I thought it was...
And like those buildings must be contributing is why we did it in that area and not all town, as was decided whom we did the ordinance originally. But the thing with Brookfield Tire Mart, Indiana, they were just saying it's a non-future being building in that area, so I think that's why they were being a bit...
I just hadn't heard that for a couple of hundred times, so I was surprised.
Can I share a reflection?
Thank you.
So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
John motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Maybe to adjourn. Thank you all for coming.